I.
I am starting the recording and I'm starting the meeting. Now, at Jen's request, I'm gonna start with the budget and looking at it. And Hadal sent us a lot of great, oh, sorry. Let me say this first, we have no minutes to report because you haven't finished them, right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll do those next meeting. And the next meeting will most likely be in July. Because the mayor hopes to send us information. And I'll tell her that I'd like to get that information before we, uh.
Here she comes.
Okay. JP's coming too. Cool. So I'm going to begin with the budget. There is no minutes. Mayor, do you have any mayor speak? Are you on? Prior to the.
No, I, I have no mayor communication.
Thank you very much. Um. I found all the information that Hadal sent and that the, uh. Treasurer sent us was very informative. I'm just gonna go over it very briefly and share the screen. That's the pipes, we'll get to that later. This, now Jen, you can't see this. This is the revenue, uh, estimate that was given to us by.
I can see it.
Can you see it, Jen?
Yep.
Alright. I have no questions on this, except that it's an estimate. And that Hadal, you've put it together based on what you know today. Our chapter 70, our cherry sheet receipts are all still estimated. Am I correct? Because the mayor, I mean, the mayor, the governor, I'm, the legislature hasn't finalized the budget. Am I correct on that? Statement, uh, mayor and Hadal?
Yes, it is on the basis of what's, uh, posted on a DLS website. It's on there and also it's proposed, it's not final.
I have no questions on this. Obviously, we have to balance the budget. And that's what you've done. At the end of this here, forty-five, nine-hundred. Is what we're using for a budget. We have to have a balanced budget. So. Does anybody have any questions on this document that's in front? Uh, Peg?
For, again, for the public, could I ask for where the changes? Are from what the budget was that we talked about a few weeks ago? That drove us to make the changes and where those changes are?
I was about to get to that. I was just talking about revenue now.
Oh, sir. Okay, never mind.
Okay, and, uh, I can do that. I mean. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding it. This is the, uh, I wanna use the motions, cuz Jen's, have you, do you see this in front of you, Jen? These are the changes that I'd like the, uh, committee to approve this evening. The changes are based on our finding of, uh, errors or unknowns. And we'll just go through them one at a time. This shows that we've reduced the budget by. A couple of thousand dollars based on the assessor's salary because it was unknown originally. And we do have the enterprise chargebacks for general government. Okay, Peg, you see that? Uh, going forward, there was a change in Public Works. Um. This is an increase to pay, to bring snow and ice to FY twenty-one amount per MGL. The mayor is requesting this, and mayor, you've approved this increase. Am I correct?
I have.
Because, and I need that statement only because the council can't just increase the budget by voting. So that's, uh, any questions on that one? From committee members? The next one is, um, the library was an increase and we did request the mayor approve that. And that's because of Mars calculation. What does Mars stand for again, Jen or somebody?
Um, I honestly don't know what the acronym itself stands for, but generally what it is, is that. Uh, it's the formula of the last three years of appropriations. For the library, um, times, I believe, two and a half percent.
Okay, so that increased two thousand dollars. Um, this is the big one, debt and interest, which is what held us up at the last council meeting. We also have the debt exclusion, uh, the, uh, enterprise chargebacks. And I'm really appreciative of the tax rate stabilization amount here. The decrease by subsidy amount city pays net. I think I need an explanation of that statement, Jen, for the public and for me.
Yep, sure. Um, so the, um, Massachusetts Clean Water. Trust, I believe it's, uh, is the acronym, MTWT. They are, um. Debt with them is subsidized, so every year there's a certain amount, um, that's subsidized and it's, it's offset by the cherry sheet. And we just pay the net. And originally, when I had presented the debt and income, or the debt and interest numbers to you, it was. With those included because it was the total amount of the payment for those, um, bonds. And so this just is deducting them because that amount of money is not paid by us. It's paid by the state.
Okay, I think I understood that. Peg or Omar, do you have any questions on this?
I don't.
It's a little hard to understand, but. It's going down, which is a good direction, so. Uh, any other comment from Hadal or the mayor or anybody on this one? I'm happy about it. Uh, moving on. Um. There is a change in unclassified, remove EH portion of PERAC appropriation. Um. Can you explain that one, Jen?
Yep, sure. Um, essentially what it is, is that when PERAC initially gives us a letter, gives a letter to Kimmy stating what. Um. What the city appropriation is. Usually it's a total amount and that's what was used in the budget initially. But that amount is broken, broken down. And a portion of it is paid by East Hampton Housing Authority. So that doesn't have to be included in our budget. So this amount went down by that amount. Because East Hampton Housing takes care of that portion of the appropriation.
Okay. Any questions on that one, Jen or Omar? Alright, that's basically it. If we look at the budget summary here, we go all the way down. You'll see that this year's budget, forty-five, nine-hundred. This is the new figure, correct, Jen? Of what we're going to approve tomorrow night and all of these figures match what you just talked about?
Yes, Hadal and I sat together and made sure that her numbers and mine aligned, so yes.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. We thought so.
And, uh, for the public's sake, it's three point one six percent less than the year before. So there is a major decrease. Um, that's, uh, two million, six hundred, five hundred thousand dollars left. So that's, that's a lot of money. Any questions on this? This is a.
I just have one question of Jen, real quick. Um, Jen, for the library, did you. Communicate to Nora the new number and have they kind of agreed that yes, your guys are in sync now?
Yes, that was, it was initially, um, the number that I had was slightly lower because my, I was picking up the wrong year. And so her and I discussed it and yes, she's in complete agreement with Madam O.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, any comment further? I noticed JP, are you still on the call if you have any comments or questions? I thought I saw him.
I'm, I'm right here, yes. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, we got you JP.
Hi, uh, I just stopped in. I did notice that the snow budget issue and I, I just wanted, but you guys already took care of that, so. Wanted to be sure we budgeted at least what we had last year and I had noticed that and taking a quick look.
Well, this whole process, the reason we do it is to give ourselves and the finance team a chance to look it over again and again. To make sure the numbers are correct and that's what we've done. I mean, you're talking about forty-five million dollars, forty-six million dollars. That's a lot of money. We gotta make sure. And there's a lot of lines in this budget, each one of them, formulas, et cetera, so. I always have seen and expect minor changes like this. Um. All I'm gonna ask the finance committee to do is to recommend to the full council by motion. The new amended budget as presented this evening.
So moved.
Can you make that motion? Did you say so moved, Omar?
I say so, I say so moved, yeah.
Um, second, I, I, again, I, I know I'm being a pain in the neck here, but when we make these motions because the public. Isn't sitting with us, can we use the actual dollar amount of the budget that we are recommending in the motion? I know, I know. Shake your head, I know.
So is this, is this right here?
Yeah.
I'm circling?
Yes.
So Omar, would you use that, please?
Yeah, I will make a motion to recommend, uh, the budget to the full city council, forty-five million, nine-hundred thousand with forty, four hundred and sixty-six dollar.
Check it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amended budget of forty-five million, nine-hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. So that's the budget and I thank the finance team for the hard work, but be ready tomorrow night to answer questions. Um, for the finance committee, I am going to present the budget with my own comments at the beginning. And then. For each section. Um, I will introduce that section, talk a little bit about it and then ask the finance committee members. If they would like to add anything for that section. And then I'll ask if counselors have questions or comments on that section. And then I'll allow the president, of course, to ask the public to comment on that section. Um. And then I'll make a motion. I'll make the motions. I don't mind doing that on each section. Cuz we have to do it precisely, given this is remote. And I will call up the. The motions as we do them. Okay? Is that okay with me, your approval, finance committee?
Sounds good.
Alright, the next, the next subject is, uh. Let me get it up. We have. Interdepartment transfer of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars and thirty-five cents for the PEG access account. This is typical. I have no questions. We need to do this every year. Um, I don't know if Nicole or anybody wants to say anything about this, but it's obvious that this has to be done. And I assume, it's up for public hearing at the sixteenth meeting tomorrow night, so. Anybody have any questions or comments on this one?
Uh, just a quick comment. I mean, if, if nothing else, at no other time, COVID nineteen has really, um, proven the value of PEG access. Um, I did, um, uh. Uh, I don't know what paper I used to do it, but, um, so we get our PEG access money and then we pass it on to our PEG access provider, which is East Hampton. Media, there is a provision in that line that the city can keep five percent, uh, for communication upgrades in the building. Um, and that has been our practice, starting, uh, PEG, correct me if I'm wrong, this year. Um, I've changed that policy and I release a hundred percent of our PEG access money right to. East Hampton, um, media, um, in the, the, you know, idea of transparency, their budget is so, so tight. Um, and that extra five percent goes so long, um, over at, uh, East Hampton Media. I'd also just note that, uh, city council president Peg Coniff, uh, was on their board and, um, and recently just stepped down and. And she really worked with my office and Jen Ramsey to make that, that happen and get full funding to East Hampton Media. So. Thank you, President Coniff.
Thank you, mayor.
So what you're saying is they get a hundred percent of this money. No longer, we're taking five percent out.
Right, but as, as you'll remember, um, Counselor Riss. Several months ago, we changed it. So this is the account that we created. And now the money goes into this account instead of directly to East Ham, in media. So this is just a, a, kind of a pass through. Uh, it goes into this account and then it gets appropriated to somehow, East Hampton Media. They, they send bills, I think, over. And it gets something like that. But, but it used to go directly from the mayor's office to East Hampton Media. This account was created as like a waystation and in addition, as the mayor, uh, indicated. There's now an amount of money that, uh, the mayor held back for capital improvements that now is going directly to East Hampton Media.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then I would request a motion.
Counselor Kuzinski.
Oh, I'm sorry JP, go ahead.
I was just curious, uh. If the mayor had said that, uh, the money that was PEG access money. Had been ninety-five percent to them, five percent to the city, I presume that would be used, for example, for upgrades for any communication devices. In, for telecommunic, for, for telecommuting, tele, handling our, our, uh, communications for the council. And other board mem, other boards remotely, for example. So I just wanted to be sure we had plenty of money around for that, that kind of a use. And so that was my first question.
Yeah, and actually, um, the, the money has been already put to good use and you will all. Realize that when we go into chambers at city council, we have smart screens that will show Zoom on it for all of the council to see. And we have cameras and we have lights, action cameras, and it's, it's quite a thing that they have been working on through the pandemic to get things going. So, uh, it's pretty slick, but yes, there, there have been a number of improvements.
It's an exponential improvement JP, when you go in the building, you'll, you'll be impressed. There's two big TVs on the wall, there's a major TV next to the podium. And all of the cameras are now remotely controlled and there's a lot more of them in there for them to show live TV, so it's really good.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Yeah, some, something that I like about the new technology at the, at the fifty pageant is that. Usually when we have a presentation for the councils, we have to go to the podium and do it. Now you don't have to. You can connect your, uh, device from, uh. From the place that you are and, uh, you can do a presentation and everything there.
Yeah.
Well, those sound like fabulous upgrades.
Yes, so the money is well used.
But I will, as a disclaimer, say that for the next live city council meeting on July seventh. There may be technical issues because of the person who will be driving some of this technology. We still have a learning curve to work through, but it'll be, it'll be quite exciting once it gets fully operational.
That's great. Uh, I, I know that the, the, uh, PEG, uh, PEG acc, uh, community access is not. Uh, a city department per se, it's its own department and the money that is collected from home, homeowner, from cable users. Uh, is really for their, their use to be able to have the public be able to see and be involved in. And utilize their, the, uh, the equipment and services of the community access. So I'd love to see them getting that hundred percent. I just wanted to point out to the public that. It's not a city department, so where you see three percent on average, the budget has gone down and, and they're getting more money. It's, I presume, you know, we're not a city, we're not talking about a city department. So I didn't know if there was any other comments about that that might be helpful for the public to understand.
I can speak to kind of the condition of East Hampton Media. Um, our, our revenue, I say our, my last meeting was last night, so I'm still an hour. Our revenue is driven by the number of subscribers to cable. And that has been going down. And so our revenue that we get from these contracts we have with the mayor and the mayor has with, um, charter. It's charter, right? Yeah. Uh, mayor has, those, the, it's strictly related to the number of subscribers. So as those go down. The revenue for East Hampton Media goes down. So on a separate topic. The Board of Directors and the Executive Director at East Hampton Media are looking at ways to drive. Additional opportunities for revenue outside of just strictly cable subscribers. We're getting completely off track. But that, but just so everyone understands that the money that runs East Hampton Media does not come from the city. It comes through a contract from the cable provider, through the mayor, and then over to East Hampton Media.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just like a pass through this, Peg, so. Any other discussion on this issue? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, uh, to recommend to the full council. Um, hold on, let me get it up higher. Uh, full council, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and five thousand, thirty-five cents for transferring to the PEG access account.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor, uh, Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Okay, moving on. Uh, the next item up is. I think this is Emily. You wanna talk about this one, Emily? It's for twenty-seven thousand for. The cost of undoing racism workshops or the mayor, whoever wants to talk about this. This is through the Human Resource Department, am I correct?
Um, I believe that's something the mayor and Lindsay were putting on. I don't know, I don't really actually have a lot to.
Okay. I thought it was. Uh, Nicole?
Yeah, that's actually out of mayor's office, the, the request and, um, undoing racism is a training that's. Um, put on by the People's Institute for Survival and Success, um. An organization, um, based on, uh, undoing racism as well as community organizing to find a common language. Of, of racism and its impact in any given, um, any given community. Um, the, this particular, uh, program has been in the Department of Justice top five. Anti-racist programs for, I think, twenty years. Um, they are out of the West Coast and New York City. Uh, we will be doing a virtual training for. Um, we'll go through the undoing community organizing workshop. Um. Uh, there's two dates in July and two dates in August. Uh, it's quite intensive. Um, it's over three days from ten to four. Uh, it will be all virtual, unfortunately. It'll be great. Um. But, you know, one of the upon advice of actually, um. Oh my gosh, Dr. Lomax Campbell, who has been working with us for a while, continues. He just did that local rapid recovery. He has done training up in Rochester with them, um, as well as on the Department of Justice. Um, has also the, the, the team we're working with. Um. I will, I was able to participate in what they call an appetizer of for our part of a larger training. Um, and. It is. It is difficult to describe. Um. What the train, it was unlike anything I expected. Um, and it's very full circle and focuses and includes an inclusion full circle. And really works on language around racism. Their sole premise is that. Um, racism is key to social inequities, um, including economic inequities and they, they firmly stand by that. Um. The Black Lives, the official Black Lives Matter also stands with this organization on how they train. Um, we will have. Fifty screens, like, cuz it's virtual, um, so we'll have fifty screens between both the July and August. Um, training. And, and I say screens because maybe my office, well, I'll watch it at one screen together. So, so it's fifty screens instead of fifty people. Um, we're working with, um, the People's Institute. Um, as well as Dr. Campbell to build those cohorts of, who attends, uh, department heads for, the, department heads. Um, uh, in city employees, um, related folks like in the DA's office or whatnot, uh, we're getting. You know, we're getting them slotted now. Um, the training for city employees, it, um, I invited. Are, um, it's mandatory. They have to pick or choose July or August. They can't pick half and half. Uh, and because it's virtual. Um, they can do it anywhere in the world. So, um, it, it's hard to say no.
How do you enforce that? I'm just curious? I mean.
Mandatory.
You say it's mandatory, but how do you know if someone has actually taken the course?
Cuz I get attendance.
Okay, alright, alright. Go ahead, Omar.
I do kinda have the same question and especially because it's virtual. I, I'm at home. I'm working from East Hampton, uh, East Hampton City. And I believe the racism is not, is not real because it's, it's some people out there who believe the racism is not real. I open the computer, I turn it on, and I don't listen to anything and, uh, I just do the shikma because I take the training. How, how we gonna really? I mean, I, I, I know it's, it's, I know, I know the question is, can a. Suggestive instead of like, uh, going directly, uh, but, but it, it can happen, you know? I, I think the idea behind it is amazing. I think it's great. Um, but I still have a concern about. People just doing the shikma and, uh, yeah, we are no racist, we don't have any racism in, in, in our city because we take, we do the training.
I would, not, not to be disrespectful, I think that when we had, um, several issues up at the high school in, what, twenty sixteen? I think there were a lot of people in those in-person meetings who were saying that exact thing and not feeling or believing it. Um, I understand not being in person is, has got that element of it. Um, but I would say that there are people who went to the DOJ city site-based intervention. Um, and got out of there and still held their opinions. Uh, the. You know, while I like the idea of it virtual, so people can attend and mandatory means something, especially in the summer. Um, there is an in-person, um. You know, element to it. I think that makes it a little more real. I think it being virtual though might also make some people feel safer. Um. The idea isn't to get everybody on the page that there's racism. I mean, they have, what, what their philosophy is. It's about what's the language you're using and where it comes from, um, regardless of what you believe or you don't believe. And, and flush it out. And I will say from personal experience, the trainers, when I went to the four hour, um.
I'm losing you, mayor.
Call it out.
Yes, we're. Mayor, you're, you're losing your.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, can you hear me? No, you're, you're kinda breaking up a little bit. You're freezing.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but your face is frozen.
Yeah, unbearably, we can hear you. It's breaking up.
Um, I'll leave and come back in.
No, I can do better now.
Better now that you took your video off.
Okay, yeah, so, um, uh. Yeah, they, they call people out. I mean, I, I, Counselor Gomez, I think it's an excellent point and unfortunately, um, a real truth, right?
No, I mean, I, mayor, don't, don't get me wrong. Um. I, I think the idea is amazing. I think if, even if this training worked for only one employee in our community, I think that's amazing. But I just, I, but, but I, I know and I get it. I get it. But, but my point is. The, at the same time, if, if we can do something more personal next time. The, the employees can really see the training and firsthand, know through the computer, uh, I think that would be better. But that's my opinion.
Alright.
So, um. On these kinds of training things, you are always gonna have those people who wanna kinda slide under the radar and not really participate. I experienced it in corporate America. They phone it in, they don't wanna deal with it, they don't wanna do it. Forever and ever, we will have that subset of humanity who just don't wanna participate. And I don't think that's the audience that the mayor. Is trying to reach. The mayor is trying to reach people and I'm not speaking for the mayor, I'm just, I would never do that. But I think that in these kinds of trainings, what the goal is, is to raise. The bar a little bit for the people who are down here, bring them up a little bit, the people who are a little better, make them even better. And, and have everybody hear the same words together. A hundred percent of the people are not gonna. and, and have everybody hear the same words together. A hundred percent of the people are not going to walk out and go, "Oh, I get it. Yay, let's do this." But if we can get kind of a common, uh, vocabulary and a common, um, direction and vision for the way City Hall wants to operate, and that the employees of City Hall want to operate in a certain way, that's amazing. And, and if people don't want to participate, probably over time, they may get weeded out because the culture of the building will make them uncomfortable. So, you can't do it all in one jump, but you can do it in a way that the, the sum is greater than the parts, I think.
Mayor, you have your hand up.
Um, yes, and a couple of things. I mean, fir- first of all, Councilor Gomez, I, I agree, something personal in is, is important. I should have mentioned the other part of this training. It's intense, um, but there, it, it's not over when the training's over. Uh, they have staff in Springfield and also staff that travels to do follow-up youth groups, but also, like, you know, advise city council, whatnot. So this is not a one-time training and then it's done. Um, the other, um, you know, uh, it's sad. I, I, I'm just gonna, I, I don't know. I, I don't, right now, I really question the ability and complete willingness for citizens in our community to be face-to-face and have a conversation to understand language used and come to some kind of acknowledgement and acceptance in person. And I think this is a great way. Um, and I'm sorry to, you know, it, it's my opinion, it's my opinion, uh, you know, as mayor, but I, I just feel like I need to put that out there. Um, the other thing I should have, um, uh, mentioned, and cannot make it mandatory, um, but strongly suggest every member of, of the school committee and the city council are also invited.
Oh, that's perfect.
What about our union employees? Are you allowed to mandate their attendance?
No. Like, it would be an MOU, but, um, they can take, um, we're working on that a little bit, um, of, of how that, that could work. Um, the other thing I feel really strongly about, which will, which will be internal, we're, we're working on it, whether it's, it's comp time or um, paid time, I'm, I'm hoping it's paid time, you know, especially those who are not unionized. I, I think of everybody on our, our floor at Fifty Payson, who, you know, honestly just aren't at department heads', um, salary, uh, they will be compensated for their participation. I, I don't think it's correct to, to have training, um, any training and not have some compensation, um, for their time. Uh, and I, I, I don't know, like, especially this one, you're undoing racism, looking at equity gap, looking at gender gap, and then you're going to have somebody go to it and say, "Yeah, you, you, you gotta give up, you know, forty-eight hours of your life, uh, for work, and, uh, you're not getting paid." So, um, I,
I think that's excellent. Great.
I, I, I also wanted to, to put, um, yeah, I just wanted to put that, that out there. Um, yeah, it's really intense. It's, it's really fascinating. I encourage people to, I gotta get the website up. If you want to learn more about this, um, it's P-I-S-A-B dot org.
Can you send that?
Can you please repeat?
An email, could you send out an email to the council and the school committee, for instance, inviting them to attend as you suggested?
Yeah, so we're, we're working on dates right now, so that will go out. And, um, Councilor Gomez, the website again is P as in Peter, I as in ice cream, S as in Sam, A as in apple, B as in boy, dot org.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, the other question I had is, like, just to use Barbara and Mary Anne as an example, are those offices closed during this, uh, session?
We have a weekend session, too.
So, this won't take away from the public's asset, access to the park or any other needs from the public. This is, this will be done on weekends or whenever, and they'll get paid for it.
Yeah, there's, there's one session during the weekend, there's one session mid work, uh, midweek, and department heads will work with each department heads of who's attending, and, you know, obviously, if, you know, one of the clerks want to go to this training in the middle of the week, then maybe the other employee, um, goes on, or, or something like that. Um, I, I don't, I mean, the department heads are mandatory, and I would expect some of them to want other employees to attend, and we're, we're going to work through that. Um, but public access to their government will not be effective.
Okay, great. Uh, I just want to say that one of the things I think about all the time, and I'll just be personal, is, do I have racist tendencies? Do I do things that are racist that I don't even know what I have? And I think that's human nature in all of us, and if a workshop like that points things out that you said, "Oh, my God, I do that," or something like that, it's valuable. And if people would go into it with an open mind, realizing that they may not think they're racist, or that they do racist things, but maybe they do, they learn. And especially if they're dealing with the public, um, in, in our building. So, I think this is excellent, Mayor. It, it's a good start, and we may, I, I know you're going to try and do it more. I kind of hope we could get it into the union contract. I know that's a tough task, to get this kind of training going, but that's another subject there, yeah.
Can I make the last comment, please?
Yeah.
As the only Latino being elected in, in Easthampton, I think this is a great step. It, it is. Uh, again, when I, when I ask for a little bit more is because I think, you know, we always going to ask for more. Uh, but I, again, it's, it's, it's a great step. I have to say thanks to the mayor for this initiative. And, uh, and I hope, um, the council and the school committee take her word and, uh, be part of this, too.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, um, darn. I'm gonna ask for a motion for twenty-seven thousand dollars from Cannabis Stabilization, uh, to fund the mayor's training, racist training workshops.
So move? Go ahead, you're pegged.
Peg, you're muted. You should say second.
Second.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
Councilor Riz says aye. The next one is, uh, Greg, are you still here? You're up. We have a Nantucket well pump motor problem for sixty thousand dollars, and Greg has sent us pictures. And so, for the public's sake, I am going to share the, share the screen with that image. Soon as I get it up. So, Greg, what are we seeing here?
Well, just to give a little background, we asked for an appropriation, uh, last fall as a capital request to remove, we, we had some vibrate, some vibration that was noticed in, in an annual inspection of that Nantucket well motor and pump. Initially, was, we're hoping it was just going to be the motor. We pulled the, we pulled the entire assembly, just to make sure it wasn't, um, something with, you know, bigger, like, we've seen, like, we found out that it is. And, uh, the pictures you can see there, if you want to scroll back up for a second, Dan, I can, um, we've got the well casing, the, the, the operating shafts are just covered in corrosion. It took the contractor much longer to get it apart, just because things were corroded, and, if you go down, you can see we've got a, we got a crack here in, uh, part of the pump housing, uh, some heavy corrosion and, and just damage on a lot of the casing couplings. Um, so,
How old is this thing?
Nineteen ninety-five.
And of course, our, our water going through it isn't exactly the best for it anyway, right? I mean, are the minerals that cause this deterioration?
Yeah, the same problems a homeowner sees with just mineral buildup from, you know, the bit of hard water we have is, is, you know, that, that sees it, sees it the same, sees the same over time. And, you know, that, this source and that well pump and motor are really a workhorse for us. We probably pull about seventy percent of the city's water from there every year. So.
Is that, is that pumped down now?
It is. Yep, it's out, and it's, it's, it's out, and, um, you know, being, to be refurbished, so. We were hoping to,
I mean, we have, we have the other wells are working, so we obviously want to get this online as soon as possible.
Absolutely, yeah. We were hoping to do it over the winter, but the contractor couldn't get to it until March, and they pulled it, and of course, everything's delayed by weeks, and, um,
If, if we appropriate this tomorrow night, when does this repair happen?
I should see the, the assembly back here within four weeks.
That's good. But we don't have a water problem. We're still,
No, not at all, no.
We have a lot of wells. Some of them aren't even being used.
No, yeah, we have an incredibly resilient water system, but this is our, th- this is one of our best, you know, if, if not our best source, you know, if it really is our, our best, strongest source, and I'd really like, we'd like to get it back online as soon as we can, so.
Uh, any comments from our counselors? Councilor Conna? Uh, you're muted.
Yep.
What is, for something like this, what's the life, you, you know, the life cycle for one of these kinds of assemblies? Is nineteen ninety-five, so what is that, twenty-six years?
Yeah.
Is that typical, or have we gone way past it's?
No, I'd say that's, it's fairly typical. I mean, twenty, twenty-five years is a good, a good run to get out. I think we'll get that out of it if we, you know, can completely refurbish it like we're trying to, so.
Okay. And so, all of these parts that we see that are corroded and broken, all of this is going to get replaced by the, the new?
Yeah, it'll basically be a brand-new assembly going in.
Okay.
Like this, this assembly right here, only with a,
Nice, okay. Cool.
Um, yeah, Greg, I assume that in nineteen ninety-five, this cost about one-tenth as much as it's costing now.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to look that up, what, what it cost back then, but, yeah. Although that was to, to buy the whole thing. Here, we're doing a kind of a refurbishment, so some of the parts will be brand-new, but I've, I think it'll,
You, you, you are able to re- retain some of the parts, okay?
Absolutely, yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Councilor Gomez.
JP, go ahead, JP, I,
I, I was just going to ask a question, and then I think I answered it myself, Greg. Uh, it, it had to do with redundant systems, and yes, that the pump itself, probably you have a couple of different types of pumps to draw the water up, but the housing is a single system, and there's no backup to the housing, right?
For, well, that source, so that the pump and housing and everything that you can see in those pictures is one unit. So, with, with any portion of that down, the, the source is down, so. But, like, in a situation like this, we'll rely heavier on the pump station, the, um, treatment plant on Hendrick Street, we'll pull more water from there, the Brook Street well, and,
There, there are redundancies with other wells. I thought that each, each pump itself, in, in, for example, here, there would be a couple of pumps.
No, that's not how these are set up.
Is there a chance, uh, JP brought up an interesting point, um, these pumps have different lifespans, um, on all our wells, so they're not all going to fail at once. In other words, some are newer than others.
Yeah, so right now, we're, we've basically changed the timing so that the Brook Street well is doing what the Nantucket well would normally do this time of year. And Brook Street was put in in two thousand and three, I want to say. Uh, and then at, you know, at Hendrick Street, there is redundant pumps. There's, there's three pumps. So, actually, well, there's six pumps, seven pumps over there, but, uh, it's kind of, I can really get into how it all works, but over there, you got a lot of lead lag and a standby, so we can, we can run the system. There's, there's some redundancy with that source, but with Nantucket and Brook Street, it's, there's really one kind of off, one is redundant to the other, to an extent, but when we lose the pump or motor, we, you know, that, that particular source is offline.
Anything else, JP? Else? Okay, anything else from counselors? Uh, take a motion to approve sixty, to recommend that the council approve sixty thousand dollars from retained, enterprise retained earnings to replace or repair the well pump motor.
So second.
We have a motion in the floor to approve sixty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Con?
Aye.
Councilor Riz says aye. Sorry, that was a spam call. Uh, so that comes up for public hearing tomorrow night, Greg. I don't know if we'll have any questions, but it's obvious that we have a lot of infrastructure to repair. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, we've been discussing our next council meeting, and I'm glad you're still on the call. Uh, I'm thinking it's going to be after July. If you have, we will move the, uh, solar things that your solar study to finance tomorrow night, but I'm hopeful in the July first, the July seventh meeting, you'll give us numbers that we can discuss at our first meeting in July, if that's not too early for you. Our finance committee meeting would be, if I'm right, the fourteenth of July. How does that sound, Mayor?
And, and bringing numbers to?
Well, maybe if you have numbers, we could put it in the packet for the July seventh meeting. I don't know. I'm just thinking that it'd be great to know. We've seen the study. We'd like to know what your plan is for trying to implement all that.
Yeah, I was hoping, um, we still have some negotiation on the total cost, but more importantly, um, our financing or our, how to pay this, um, it'll be a host of, of different pots of money, and I, um, I don't have my hands on the biggest pot, which is ARPA money. It's, it's being held up, so I'm, I'm very, um, yeah, I'm just being very cautious. Um, there's a balance between the ARPA money and our reimbursement rate from FEMA, um, and FEMA's low, so, and that would affect our cash flow. Um, and there's a question of, you know, wh- what, what financing makes, makes sense for the city and, and whatnot, um, as it compares to savings, energy savings, um, and what, what this plan would take off of our capital improvement plan, and I just don't, I don't have all those numbers. I would like to, the, the odd request I have around this, um, is that it is not an easy financial series of transactions, and I'd like to get it before the technical part in front of council, so as we go deep into the numbers, um, everyone understands how, how we pay for this, um, with your approval, um, and that,
If, if I can think about it kind of introductory, we're going to study it at our first meeting in July, uh, whatever you might have, numbers-wise, would be great. But we can at least discuss it, and we can move forward with perhaps your, I, I, I'm going to assume there's a staggered term of getting all of this implemented. It would be pretty expensive to do it all at once. So all of that to be discussed. The point of my discussion now is, our next meeting will be July fourteenth, as far as I'm concerned. Unless there's anything that the other committee members think is going to happen. We may be getting appropriations in July. Who knows? But we'll at least discuss the solar thing at that July fourteenth meeting, if that's the correct date. I think it is, Greg, right?
It's, and, and I think we also have to understand that there will be no second July meeting, so it's just finance on July fourteenth to talk it through. And, and where I'm getting kind of spun around the axle on this is, and I understand, Mayor, around, um, having us understand the concept of this and the, the breadth and the scope of it, I think is critical to any future decisions the council needs to make. But if you have any sense, and if there's any artifacts that you can bring to the four, the meeting on the fourteenth, that at least line up the, I know you just mentioned ARPA, you mentioned FEMA, you mentioned bonding. If we can just have those as just things that we're going to be talking about, not numbers, per se, but I think we just, part of the conversation has to be the breadth of where all this money is going to come from and how that might be figured out. I think it would at least help me. I don't know about everybody else, but, um, it, so it feels like a presentation on understanding the technology, and then a finance discussion around how we finance it.
All right, so I'm going to cut this off now, because it's not even in committee yet. I just wanted to make sure that July fourteenth was a good date to do this, and I think that's the case. So, uh, we'll discuss it on the fourteenth. Tomorrow night, I'll move it to committee. Um, and this gives the mayor a lot more time to maybe present some ideas on how we might fund it, or where it needs to go.
Um, may I just ask a clarifying question? I just want to make sure. So, tomorrow night's meeting, there's no expectation of me talking or speaking to this. It'll be referred to committee. Finance, the committee hearing it will go to will be July fourteenth, and that's finance.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll send it to finance tomorrow night because there's a big financial element.
Yes.
There's no real committee reports tomorrow night, and I don't want to open the door to that because we said that we're, that because we said there wouldn't be.
Completely understood.
We're just gonna send it right to that committee just so that it's on the table. But the information was extensive and I think the counselors appreciate it, so thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for, for a little bit of the unorthodox and for clarifying, um, uh, calendar, I appreciate it.
Okay, cause after this week, I could use the two weeks, so, so thank you. All right, so if there's nothing else, counselors, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No adjourn.
Second.
So we have a motion to adjourn, Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Riz says aye. Thank you, Greg, thank you, Hedo, thank you JP, thank you, Emily, everybody, we'll see you tomorrow night.
You betcha.
Hopefully it goes smoothly.
Have a good night.
Good night.